Well, welcome one and all. I want to call this business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to order for Monday, February 20th. Our first order of business is to call the roll. Clerk Borling.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Juarez.
Gistoy.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Commissioners, may I please have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hoffman?
So moved.
Made by Commissioner Pradel.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. All favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? You're in good form tonight, Commissioner Juarez. So, first of all, I just want to say a thank you to everyone who's with us in the chambers and those who may be watching online. I want to remind people that we will be having our opportunity for public comments here coming up after a bit. And if you are calling in, the number for those public comments is 888-382-9556. And we are blessed tonight to have with us the Reverend David Zomer of Bethany Reform Church, taking us to our invocation. So I'm going to ask everybody, as I gave him a moment, since he's on crutches, to rise himself here, everyone to rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this time together of responsibility. I pray for blessing and protection upon each one of these commissioners. May you guard their will and their courage, give them peace. Thank you for allowing us to live in this city. We also lift before you President Carter and Mrs. Carter during these difficult times, and thank you for their service and their service to humanity. Bless everyone in this room. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Reverend Zomer. Appreciate that. We do have a proclamation this evening, and it's going to be read by Vice Mayor Cooney, and I will bring the proclamation down. I believe there's somebody here to accept that proclamation. There we go. All right. Vice Mayor Cooney.
A March for Meals Kalamazoo, March 2023. Whereas on March the 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. And whereas for more than five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and it is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas this year Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregant and home-delivered in the city of Kalamazoo, have served our communities admirably for 51 years. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in the city of Kalamazoo are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kalamazoo provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the city that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kalamazoo provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas the senior population is increasing substantially, an action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. Now therefore, on behalf of the 54th City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, we hereby proclaim March 2023 as a month celebrating Meals on Wheels, and urge every community member to take this month to honor our senior nutrition programs, the individuals they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National March for Meals Celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America.
See if you were. Very good. Appreciate the time, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Commissioners. We have been, like you said, delivering meals. I think at this point, we're celebrating our 60th year as an agency, but well over 50 years. We would not be as successful as we are without our funders, without the many, many volunteers we have, and then the employees we have with that commitment to delivering safe, hot, nutritious meals to our vulnerable populations. So, thank you very much for the time today. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. And I also want to recognize one of those volunteers who's done those Meals on Wheels delivery over time, right? Our own Vice Mayor Don Cooney. Thank you, Don. We are now at the point for adopting our formal agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like moved to the regular agenda?
Mr. Mayor, could I please have item G7 moved to the regular agenda?
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Any other items? See none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have any item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? See no one. Communications, Manager Rizma.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. So now is our opportunity for public comments on any item you would like to share with the Commission at this business meeting. If you are here in the chambers, please come forward now. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name, whether you live in the city. And if you'd like to call in, I'll just remind you again, the number is 888-382-9556. Please begin calling now if you want to make a comment. Is there anyone in the chambers who wants to speak during public comments? Wendy Fields.
That would be me. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wendy Fields. I'm a resident of the city of Kalamazoo. I'm here in response to a letter that I received from City Manager Rizma, and just wanted to respond to that. I appreciate the letter and the follow-up. But in your letter to me regarding the outcome of your investigation involving former Chief Coakley and the firm that conducted the investigation, you stated, and I quote, "In compliance is a diverse firm that specializes in investigations regarding sexual misconduct and discriminatory harassment in work environments." In my research of In Compliance, when they were hired by the city, their staff was comprised of 14 white women, six white men, one black woman, one black man. They now have 14 white women, five white men, two black women, and one black man. This is their overall description of their firm, and I quote, "In compliance consultants have decades of experience within the education environment, navigating the issues that are critical to today's schools, colleges, and universities. Because of all of our consultants, because all of our consultants are attorneys, we combine legal knowledge with a deep understanding of education operations, offering practical advice and effective solutions to complex compliance issues. We have become trusted advisors to satisfy clients across the country." End of quote. Nowhere in their description do they mention diversity, equity, experts in civil rights, sexual harassment, et cetera. While they have a couple of attorneys on staff that have experience in some of these areas, it is interesting to me that they don't describe themselves as experts in the field of diversity, equity, experts in civil rights, sexual harassment, et cetera. How is this organization selected? On the onset of this investigation, I voiced concerns as to whether this investigation would be conducted objectively using an anti-racist lens. Given the history of systemic racism via practices and policy of the city, verified through the city's own assessments of itself, my concern bears itself out. All three complainants were white females, and in the compliance, a predominantly white female-led organization was hired to conduct the investigation. Again, I asked, what was the selection process from hiring this organization? In the investigative report submitted by In Compliance, one of the complainants alleged that an incident happened in 2018, which wasn't reported until last year. In 2018...
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who want to provide a public comment this evening? See no one. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, do we have anyone who's called in? We'll go ahead and check. We do not. Thank you, D.C. Chamberlain. Appreciate it. We are now to our consent agenda. City Manager Rizma.
We have the following items presented for approval this evening. First is approve a contract extension with Unique Paving Materials Corporation for asphalt patching materials for the 2023 season in the amount of $100,000. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Rathco Safety Supply Incorporated for sign installation and maintenance services in the amount of $100,000. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Treeworks Incorporated for the removal of hazardous trees throughout the city and its cemeteries in the amount of $156,300. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with Davis Construction Incorporated for various construction modifications to the wastewater tertiary disk filtration process facility contract in the amount of $169,578.92. Next is the approval of a five-year lease agreement with Kalamazoo Storage LLC for off-site record storage at 3003 South Burdick Street in the amount of $271,500. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental and new purchase order with Treeworks Incorporated for Water Station 5 tree removals in the amount of $314,200. Next is the adoption of a resolution recommending approval of a social district and commons area permit for Aloha Kalamazoo LLC doing business as Shakespeare's Pub located at 241 East Kalamazoo Avenue. Next is the adoption of a resolution recommending approval of a social district and commons area permit for Bistro 2 LLC doing business as High Dive Kitchen and Bar located at 214 through 224 East Michigan Avenue. Next is the adoption of a resolution from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Liquor Control Commission recommending approval of a small wine maker and on-premises tasting room permit for West Main Hill LLC located at 1432 Prospect Street. Next is the approval of fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. Next is the acceptance of a school violence prevention program grant from the United States Department of Justice, Community Oriented Policing Services, in the amount of $97,500. Next is the approval of a grant in the amount of $330,000 to the Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services from the city's coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery, ARPA funds, to remediate lead-based paint in 20 residential units occupied by low-income families with children under the age of six. Next is the approval of a recommendation to the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners that Gary Lee McCormick be reappointed as one of three city representatives on the Central County Transportation Authority. Next is the approval of the appointments of the following city representatives to the Kalamazoo County Consolidated Dispatch Authority Governing Board of Directors, the appointment of Deputy Public Safety Chief Matt Huber as a regular member, and the appointment of Public Safety Chief David Boyson as an alternate member. Next is the approval of the appointments of the following city representatives to the Utility Policy Committee, the appointment of Deputy City Manager Jeff Chamberlain as a regular member, and the appointment of Deputy Management Services Director Melissa Fuller as the second alternate member. And finally, approval of the following appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees. The reappointment of David Benak to the Environmental Concerns Committee for a term expiring on January 1, 2026. The appointment of Steve Romanelli to the Environmental Conserves Committee for a term expiring on January 1, 2026. And the appointment of Caitlin Becken to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on January 1, 2025.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 6 and 8 through 17, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Juarez.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hess. Clerk Borling, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Now our regular agenda.
Item G7, approval of a contract with Camminga and Road Voods Incorporated for the 2023 to 2024 Ransom Street Improvements Project in the amount of $12,287,470.60 for base bid items.
Thank you, Major Rizma. Commissioner Pradel, I'll let you go ahead and speak to this.
Yeah, I just removed that from the consent agenda just because of the size of, you know, it's a $12 million item, and anytime something that large, I just feel it's worth taking off the consent agenda, putting it on the regular agenda, just to give the public a chance to learn more about that project.
Great. We have our Public Services Director, James Baker, who can speak to this project.
I see you didn't wear your cape today, Mr. Baker.
I left that at home. Yeah, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. Just to give you some background on this project, this is a large corridor improvement project. This project is going to span ransom from Walbridge Street all the way west to Westonage. This project includes large diameter sanitary sewer interceptor. So we're going to be installing a 42-inch interceptor throughout this project area, new water main, and then entire street reconstruction to include five-foot wide, at a minimum, sidewalks on both sides of the street from Walbridge all the way down to Westonage, street lights that will be so bright that they'll rival any other place in the city. And then we've got, I believe, 103 new trees that are going to go into this corridor as well, and there's a bunch of other stuff that's going on. This project was planned in accordance with the Northside Cultural Business District, so there's been a number of meetings and interactions between the plans that they've got on the table and these plans to make sure we're working together. This is a two-year project. We plan to go up to Rose Street from Walbridge in year one, and then from Rose Street to Westonage in year two. So there's going to be a lot of pedestrian detours. There's going to be a lot of, you know, motorized traffic detours as well. This is going to be something that we're going to have to continue to work together with the community on to get through this project over the next two years. But when it's done, this is going to be remarkably beautiful corridor. Be happy to take any questions on any of the project as well.
Commissioner Pradel, question?
Yeah, and I think, you know, just a kind of a general question, a very simple one, is just why, you know, so the public can understand, you know, why now, you know, why the significance of it, why the cost, you know?
Yeah, that's a great question. So really, the driving basis for this project was the interceptor. On Westonage, we have a 42-inch interceptor that was installed in the 1960s, I believe. And then over just east of where the roundabout is, that pipe then upsizes to 54-inch. The span of pipe that is on ransom is undersized. It's currently 24-inch. So you've got this section that's under capacity, undersized. When we did the roundabout project a few years ago, we upsized all the sanitary sewer within the limits of that project to make ready for this next progression, if you will. So we've had plans on the shelf for a number of years that identified that as a major need, and really, we wanted to get in there and do that work. We also kind of were aware of the Northside Cultural Business District plan to revitalize that area, and we had kind of two driving project forces that were able to come together. The other utilities, including Storm Sewer and Water Main, were in need of replacement due to age, capacity, material, and break history as well. So it was just an ideal time to look at the entire street cross-section from the bottom all the way up to the top.
Thank you, Director Baker. Other questions from Commissioners on this project? I have one, Director Baker. How are we going to pay for this?
There's a fiscal impact section in the memo that details out funding sources within water, wastewater, and streets. Those are kind of the three project drivers. Within wastewater, that's kind of the larger cost components are dealing with that large diameter sewer. That's pretty deep. It's deeper than most sewers as well. So you see, those dollars are identified in there as well. This project did qualify for a state ARPA grant and state clean water, state revolving funds. So those are low-interest loans or programs that make the project terms more amenable to us in terms of financing. So this is really a cooperative approach where you've got kind of that asset management plan concept where streets, water, wastewater can come together and share in cost, and then deliver a final project that's going to have overall improved impacts to the community.
Thank you. Really appreciate the answer. And I'm not going to ask you more questions because I don't want you to lose your voice. So thanks for coming here to help us with this. As a member of the NCBDA, the Northside Cultural Business District Authority, just a reminder that this was an opportunity we took advantage of to create another tax increment financing district related to that corridor improvement opportunity that we had there. And this ransom street corridor is one of the main components of that district. So that's basically using a tool that we use in our downtowns in Michigan, what you call a DDA or DCA kind of a model, and providing that tool opportunity for tax increment financing in an adjacent neighborhood. So this, I think, is going to be a big, big step in helping achieve the outcomes of the NCBDA, which is very much a revitalized corridor there, an opportunity for economic growth, and, you know, really creating an additional step to move those growth opportunities, you know, further north here out of the downtown. So it's really come together, and that NCBDA Board has spent a lot of time going through various design scenarios because it's so deep, it's all going to have to be dug up. What's it going to look like when it's put back together? So I think there's really great hopes for what this project will do for that district, the NCBDA, but also, you know, more so for our infrastructure and all that together. So thank you for working together with that board. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? See no one. Commissioners, the motion is to approve this contract and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess, supported by Commissioner Decker. Discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say this is awesome because this is us investing in the infrastructure in some of our core neighborhoods that have been not invested in so long. And it's also preparing, kind of like the mayor said, for the development that is getting ready to happen on the north side. So I think that is awesome. I'm excited to see all of the Facebook posts that'll go out talking about the road closures. I know our team has been very adamant about making sure that they're putting up more stuff within the Facebook and within the community and letting our residents know, hey, this is about to happen. It's going to be a two-year project. So I know that's going to happen because they're awesome at that. And like I said, I've just seen so much more come out about within the communications to the community. And also when we're doing this, and I'm pretty sure our team is already on this, again, goes back to something like Commissioner Pradel and I have been working on, again, is that communication, just, you know, the Northside Neighborhood Association, just making sure that, you know, I know they know what's coming, but just kind of hounding it on them, you know, until that, I think it's the April 13th day is when that starts, Director Baker, is what I saw within the packet. So, yeah, I'm excited for that, and I will make sure to stay clear of that for a couple of years until it's done, and I'm excited to see what it looks like.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Just adding one thing on your comment about staying clear of it. So we do have some foundational businesses that are partners with NACD, and one of them is the Park Street Market, and the businesses that are in that little complex there. So I would like to encourage people, despite this, to still make it over there and support those businesses. They've been here doing great work, making sure we have access to, you know, full-service grocery store on the north side. And I know that they're very, very concerned about what this could do for their business over the next couple of years. It is going to make it a little tough to get in there. I think that we're trying to work about different access points to that parking lot, try to accommodate that. But we'll have to be a little more attentive about getting over there, making sure we're shopping, not only there, but the Victorian Bakery and other businesses that are right there. Commissioner Decker?
I just want to say thank you for that, Mayor. I just, you know what I mean.
I do, yeah. Clerk Burling, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Prado?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on our agenda is reports and legislation. Mayor Isma?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of things this evening that I want to talk about. First, very good news. We received late Friday afternoon from Senator Peters' office in DC that the city of Kalamazoo was awarded a Reconnecting Communities Pilot Award of $12.2 million. And this will be funding to go towards the upgrade of Kalamazoo and Michigan Avenue with traffic calming measures and pedestrian, bicycle, and transit improvements. So, awesome work by our grant specialist, Carrie Lynn Williams, and our departmental teams putting that proposal together, and love it. So, more to come as we continue to roll out the two-way street conversion. Secondly, I just wanted to highlight a few things from Saturday's Commission Retreat. Thank you all for putting in a full day's work on a Saturday, and our team out there as well. I think we had a very productive retreat, and we left Saturday with some homework to do by city staff. But it also allowed us to begin discussing and developing desired goals and outcomes for next year's budget, 2024. So, this is a preliminary step in February that I believe is probably the earliest we've started working on a upcoming year's budget. And so, applaud our team for that. And the initial evaluation was done on Saturday, considering perceived impact of projects and programs and difficulty based on our current knowledge. So, with that information, our staff will be coming together and back to you on March 20th at our Committee of the Whole meeting, where we will presenting relative data and continue to evaluate those outcomes based on capacity and resources within the city. So, that will culminate in a, hopefully, a proposed priority presentation that would be approved by the Commission, and that would help us then start building next year's budget. So, again, thank you. I think we had a very energetic day on Saturday, and look forward to more work to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Isma. Now, we are at the opportunity for Commissioner comments. Is there anyone who would like to start this evening? Commissioner Decker, thank you. Someone's got to break the ice.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to talk about some of the things that we just approved here on the consent agenda. One of them was for RathCo, and it talks about our road awareness and directions and designations, hoping that includes the bike lanes. I've heard a lot of people talking about they don't know how to use the bike lanes. I've honked at so many people riding in the lane. I'm like, come on, get over. So, hopefully, you know, some of those funds will be used to some of those signs and, you know, putting a little bike there so people kind of know. I also wanted to talk about one of the big things, one of the main sticky notes that I believe got the most red dots was the violence within our youth. So, I'm very excited to see that we have that grant from the DOJ that talks about school violence prevention programs. So, very, very excited about that. And I believe that a lot of the things that we approved today kind of goes also with what we've been trying to do forward as this Commission is moving things forward. It talks about, again, we had KNHS here giving a great presentation. This talks about the $330,000 that they're also going to get to help with the lead-led mediation within some of the homes that we have here. So, I just kind of wanted to kind of lift that up because, you know, I was kind of excited about this one. They had some good things on there. We are expanding businesses that are within our social drinking district, and I'm kind of excited to go to. I believe the address at 1432 Prospect is the Henderson Castle, if I'm not mistaken. So, I think that's going to be kind of exciting, especially for something that's on that side of town, something that I would like to partake in. If I can go squash some grapes and enjoy that fine thing, that would be awesome. But yeah, I just, I think we're going in a great direction. I think we do have work to do. Nothing happens overnight. Change takes time. I do believe that we are still creating and will always continue to create a culturally strong and vibrant neighborhoods so that everyone here within the city of Kalamazoo can share in the prosperity that we have. So, glad to be up here doing this work with you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
And with our team. And I had a wonderful time on Saturday. I told City Manager Isma that that was an awesome meeting. I loved the format. I loved how it was put together, and I think we were able to get across more of IRDs and thoughts the way that it was set up. So, I want to say kudos to that and a thank you to Ashley for coming to spend the day with us and kind of walking us through that training. And thank you Deputy Manager Lamb for working with the Kalamazoo County and getting that information to have Ashley come help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Anyone else who wants to make comments? Commissioner Hess?
I'll go. Again, gratitude to all city staff that were involved in creating that retreat and being there. It wasn't just Commission that was there. It was all city staff and administrators. So, I really appreciate their efforts and time in being there on Saturday as well. I'm looking forward to the March 20th report out of what's going to come back to us. And I'll admit, Parks and Rec and the Kalamazoo Youth Action Council are hosting a karaoke game night this Friday, the 24th. It's free. It's at the Mayor's Riverfront Park Community Room, and to RSVP, call 311 for any youth that want to attend that. I have been inspired by 62 people from the city of Kalamazoo employ, people who work for the city of Kalamazoo, joining in the moral courage training, which is our new DEI training that's happening for, it started last week, and it's happening for the next three weeks. And I want to thank Assistant Chief Victor Green and Tanya Hewitt-Smith for working and putting that together. I'd like to thank Irsad Manji, who is the author of the book, Don't Label Me, for actually providing the training. I think it's going to be valuable. I think it's a game changer, not only for the employees of the city of Kalamazoo, but the ripples that are going to go out from this. So, I think it's just really, really valuable. And shout out to the Commission for having provided the funds for that training. Just a week ago, at Michigan State University, we all know what happened. I, for one, and along with so many of you, have been praying for all of those who are impacted, and many of them live among us here in Kalamazoo. I pray also for our human condition. Commissioner Decker mentioned, one of the biggest priorities that came out of our Saturday retreat was gun violence among our youth. So, I don't think any amount of money is going to stop that. It's going to be a collective response by all of us to be able to work on that. But for a moment, I've had a little bit more compassion, a little bit more empathy, a little bit more patience with my fellow humans because we're all hurting. So, I just want us to realize here in Kalamazoo that everyone has a story, and we're learning that in our moral courage, right? Everyone has a story. So, everyone has a struggle. Let us be a bit more understanding, a bit more kind, a bit more patient with our fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Prado?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to also just thank city staff, Commissioners, and even just people from the public who were at a retreat on Saturday. It was really just nice to sit down at tables, small groups, and meet with city staff and just ask some clarifying questions, better understand things, share some ideas with them. It was an awesome opportunity to do that, and I was particularly glad to see that, you know, it was very clearly that gun violence rose very high to the top of that priority list. There's a number of reasons why that matters to our community, but, you know, namely, you look at the number of young people and the increase in young people who've been involved in violence in our community. It's unacceptable, and nowhere should that be acceptable to anyone from any neighborhood. And especially, the other thing, too, that in conversation with Chief Boyson, you know, one of the graphs that you look at that we should all care deeply, deeply about is when you look at the racial demographics, something like 96% of people who are involved in gun-related violence are men of color. And, you know, that should speak to the fact that, you know, we should all want to care, and it shouldn't just be the piece of that pie. So, I, you know, I really hope that we can all become equally as outraged about what has been happening and take part in trying to be part of that solution. Wanted to take a minute, you know, we, one of the things that we have as Commissioners is we have a platform sometimes to talk about an issue. And a week ago, Saturday, I was just trying to enjoy a quiet evening with my wife and my three kiddos, and we heard a beep coming from our basement, and a very faint beep. Actually, my oldest son heard it from his bedroom. I don't know that I would have paid attention to it right away. And went downstairs to see what it was, and it was our carbon monoxide detector. So, you know, my first instinct, like a lot of us, you know, would probably be like, oh, it's probably just needs to be the batteries removed or replaced. So, I go upstairs. We have one upstairs by the kid's bedroom, so I brought that downstairs, and sure enough, within about five minutes, that was beeping. Well, you know, the way that those are set up is that you have to have 70 parts per million before CO detector goes off. So, you're talking decent high levels already. So, at that point, we decided we were going to call, you know, 911 for help, you know. And so, sure enough, it seemed like about a third of Public Safety arrived at our front door. A very quiet night turned into not so quiet of a night. And it, we got our kids. Our neighbors were kind enough to let our kids go over to their house for a second. And when they were coming in with the reader, they realized it was truly very, very dangerous levels of carbon monoxide were coming up from our basement. And it turns out that our boiler was leaking carbon monoxide at pretty high levels. And, you know, we did not have a carbon monoxide detector in our basement until a year ago. We've lived there for nine years. And, you know, I know, you know, it is an expense, and for some of us, a much higher expense, but if you have any ability to do so, please make sure there is a working operational CO detector, carbon monoxide detector on every floor of your house. Because there is no doubt in my mind, we were all about ready to go to bed. If we had not had that in our basement, I'm not sure that we would have woken up. And, you know, so anyways, just please, please, if you're listening to me, make sure that you have a working CO2 detector on every floor of your house. Please. But along that line, I just wanted to take a second to thank folks at Public Safety. I mentioned it felt like we had about a third of Public Safety all ride up to our curb, which, as you can imagine, having like 12 different people parading through my house as a Commissioner was a lot of fun. But I wanted to just share the professionalism. Sergeant Brian Rattenbach was there, who was kind of the leader on the scene, and just showed a tremendous amount of just, I guess, just grace and I just kind of understanding what it was probably like for my family and what we were dealing with. And then I also thought it was pretty special as well because from, coming from the fire side of things, John Halder, it was his last service call of his 25-year career. He was coming out to our house. And so, I had a chance to shake his hand and thank him for his 25 years of service. And so, anyways, I just wanted to make sure to acknowledge him as well. But again, you know, a very scary situation that could have turned out much, much worse, and it's just astonishing how affordable that can actually be to save your family's life or people you care about. So, please, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Prado. Vice Mayor Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express my solidarity with the people at Michigan State, the students who lost their lives, and the students that are still in the hospital. I just heard today that one of those students found out that he was paralyzed from his shoulders down for the rest of his life, a young man like that. So, and I want to strongly support the efforts that are going on in Lansing to put in some control on guns. That is one, a very important first step. But of course, the issue is much deeper than that. You mentioned that it's so much of this is happening to black people. And it's also locality-based. And we know that social supports reduce crime, and the lack of social supports increase crime. So, putting the resources that we can into the areas that are hurting is a big step toward reducing violence. Over the weekend, or I guess it was Friday, we did a program on Public Media Network on violence, and Chief Boyson was the person whom we helped. Dr. Ron Kramer, who used to be the Director of the Criminal Justice Department at Western, he and I do a program over there called Critical Issues Alternative Views. And we asked Chief Boyson to come in and talk about his understanding of what needs to be done about violence and what we're doing in the city, and he just did a wonderful job. So, people can watch that on Public Media Network. It's also on YouTube. So, it's so painful to see this happening so many times. When this happened, I do work at the Lewis Walker Institute on campus, and we have a young woman there from Mexico, and she came into the office in tears, frantic, saying, I came here because I was trying to escape the violence, and now it's here, and I'm not safe. And we have such a long way to go to make our people safe, and we have such a great opportunity to work on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cooney. So, I'll go ahead and finish out here. Just one thing I want to remind the community, and this is using a segue from your story, Commissioner Prado, is that in the city of Kalamazoo, as of January 2023, under our rental requirements for landlords that rent properties in the city of Kalamazoo, carbon monoxide detectors are now required. So, thank you, city staff, for being forward-looking along those lines. And I do want to remind landlords that, and tenants both, that I suppose the opportunity exists for any landlord that has a property that was recently certified, that you could coast forward for a while and wait for your next recertification inspection in order to get a CO detector in place. But please, don't do that. We have an example we just talked about here this evening. That is something that the city of Kalamazoo now requires for rental properties. They're available at reasonably low-cost plug-in or battery-style detectors. Any hardware store or big-box store will carry them. So, I'm hoping that next time I go to Menards, I will see that the shelf has been emptied, and they're going to have to order more because everybody's running out and making sure they're installing those detectors. I had a week that was kind of booked ended by two gatherings. I got to talk a little bit about the city of Kalamazoo. And here's one thing that was, I mean, just so impressive to me about that is that I attended something called Leadership Kalamazoo, which is a year-long participatory, kind of a community-building training that happens here. It's sponsored through Chambers Southwest Michigan First. And I think they've got their biggest class ever. And I think they've got their biggest class ever starting out now. They just started the year, they're 2023. And, you know, primarily younger people, earlier in their professional lives, not entirely, but people who are taking time away from work because they care about this community and want to build those connections that you were talking about earlier, about how we're working together here. And I just, the energy in the room was fantastic. And so that is so nice for me in this position. That's something I get to do, is go spend some time with people who care deeply about the community and are demonstrating it by taking that step to do that extra effort and want to know more with, you know, how they are more connected to this place that we live. And then at the end of the week, I went and spoke to a very large group. I was surprised. I didn't know five people would show up out in the Kiva, out at Friendship Village, for a gathering, I think it's called a Wake Up World that they sponsor out there. It was packed. And these are people, for the most part, you know, that are at the end of their careers or have had their careers and are now making a choice to live in a place where there's an opportunity for more support as they go on. And but still, the exact same feeling in the room. People showed up for this because they cared about the city of Kalamazoo, had questions and concerns, also interested in what can I still do to be part of that. So from one end to the other, you know, getting to spend time with groups of people that care about their community is profoundly meaningful and uplifting in those times when we do feel discouraged about horrible things that we experience that happen to people in this world and ongoing situations where we have more systemic limitations for people being able to live, you know, full and fulfilling lives in a safe way. So that's the good news part of it. Once again, it's a pleasure to work with all of you and the team here at the city. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.